All units, order. All right, we'll call Danny here, Dana here, Kimberly here, Diana here, Jeff here, Rob here. I'm also here, meaning you probably know some certified?
Yes.
All right, please join me, the boys please.
I present the vision to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under Adam, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I haven't read it for a while.
All right.
The Mount Porum Area School District partnership with the community is dedicated to nurturing, educating, and challenging our students, preparing and empowering them to be productive, responsible, and self-fulfilled members of society.
Thank you. To A, approval of the agenda before we approve, if we can, we'd like to move 7A right after 6A, and then the agenda will continue as is. So moved.
Seven.
All right, motion by Diana, seconded by Jeff. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. To B, approval of the March 4th, 2019 regular and executive session minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, moving on to 3A, school news.
Good evening, board members and those in the audience. Before we get on to our celebrations of the evening, I thought it might be helpful to share with you a couple of great things happening in our schools. Particularly this past weekend, the high school, we had a group of students who participated in science lyte competition up at UW Stout, and it sounds like they did a fantastic job. I'm not familiar with all the details, as I was away out of town in Chicago this weekend attending a conference, but I'm eager to hear how they did. And I want to thank Mr. Nichols and his classroom. If anyone's been on our district's Facebook page, you've seen how some leprechauns have come to find their way into his classroom, and those leprechauns aren't just our kindergarten students that I'm talking about. It was absolutely delightful video, if you get a chance, it's good for a laugh. And getting while they're hot, the band show tickets are on sale, because right after we get back from spring break, that Thursday, Friday, and Saturday night, there are 7:30 performances each of those three nights. $10 is all it takes to get into the door, and I promise you a great night of fun. I think The Incredibles is part of the theme, and there might be a couple of other characters that'll be joining in their adventure, so thanks to the team for that.
All right, any other school news?
Yes, tomorrow the local arts department will be having their pops concert at 7:30 at the high school, and that's a free show. There also was an orchestra concert at Left Street that took place at the high school that was with the high school students as well as the eighth grade students. It was very nice.
And with the forensics meet that happened just this past weekend?
Maybe some people in our audience know a little bit about that, but like, stand up and tell us about it. Yeah.
Tom too, forensics, yes.
So, the forensics meet was on Saturday. I think most of the people that participated are going on the state, so that'll be...
For your weeks.
Yep.
Awesome. All right, any other school news? All right, moving on to 3B, citizens comments.
None here.
All right, just checking, all right. For A, personal transactions.
There was an intended board member.
Motion to approve, both.
Second.
Motion by Diana, seconded by Rob. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, moving on to five, consent agenda. Motion to approve consent agenda. Second. Motion by Diana, seconded by Kimberly. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, moving on to 6A, board recognition of the 2018 girls cross-country team.
Well, I am so excited to share this news with you, and thank you, board members, for your continued partnership and wanting to make sure that we recognize our students not only for their participation in activities outside the schoolhouse, but then, of course, what they do inside the school day as well. Today you get the best of both worlds, because we have our state cross-country team, who've also been named all-academic by the WIAA. What does, can someone tell us what that means? Do you guys know what that means? It means you have a great point average status, Coach?
Um, I guess I'll just read this little...
There you go.
Uh, the WCCCA, which is the Wisconsin Cross Country Coaches Association Academic All-State Award, will be presented to those runners who qualify for the WIAA State Meet, and also meet certain academic criteria, which is listed below. So there's an individual and a team component. The individual, you have to have at least a 3.5 or above, which all seven of them did. And then the team, they take the top five of your seven, the best five of your seven, average them out, and it has to be a 3.4. Our ball, ours was 3.88.
Wow.
So they already received their individual certificates, and I have the team ones right here.
Awesome. And tonight's certificate night, because we also have some certificates from our Board of Education as well. Do you think we could distribute those and maybe take a picture with our board and our members of our team over at our staging ground? Here? Look at that, framed and everything. Emily, there you go. How do I say this name, Ryan? Did I say it right? I love it, what a beautiful name, Emily. Wonderful. Can we take a picture, Coach? And I think Colleen, this time, she'll choose. Colleen? Board members, could I ask if you'd be willing to join us in this right here? Coach, chorus, Coach? That would coach, starts with you. Think about all that you've accomplished. My gosh, wouldn't you mind having your rest and relax? Oh my gosh, between this, and school, and church, and everything else you guys do. And then it starts to be, thank you so much for what you've done.
We need a question.
We need a question.
Actually, not too bad, it was good. Okay, one, two, three. And one more for good measure. There we go. One, two, three. If you could shoot that one shot. And one more.
The reason, team, don't go anywhere yet, because there's other people who we want to take your picture with. Board members are going to step down right now. We know this doesn't happen without a very supportive family. And so, family members, would you mind joining us? Well, thank you for grabbing my grandpa here.
I'm sure you're not done yet, but we're close.
I'm just glad they didn't count just the race.
I heard my niece is watching there, not gonna lie. Thank you very much.
Nicely done, team. I'm proud of you.
All right, so we are going to jump to the 7A, Considered as a Chief and a High School of 2019 Youth Art Month.
Thank you very much for allowing us to adjust the calendar, the schedule, I should say, to honor not only Youth Art Month, which you'll see a resolution that I've drafted for the board's consideration, but also to recognize these fine fantastic professionals that came to talk here at the board meeting tonight. I'd love to be able to have them come down, if you don't mind, because you're about to get a picture too, you know? Come on down, come on down. And while they do that, if you don't mind me sharing with you that our art department does a really exceptional job, at all levels, quite frankly, of including students and involving them in activities both not just in the classroom, but outside the classroom in support of community initiatives, also allowing kids to express their talents through multiple modes of art. And it's very, very hard to find high-quality art teachers, and I'm pleased to tell you that you have something for you tonight, a great group of not only teachers, but leaders within the art movement, and they're here in Mount Porum. How lucky we are. So, with that being said, I know that you guys have a leader in Dana Showers, so to speak. Is that my understanding, Dana? You kind of are at the high school, really, and became leader of the high school? Pardon me?
Laura's our cast member.
Laura is your cast member with a sick child tonight, so thank you for being here. Anything you'd like to share with the board tonight about the good work that's happening within our program?
Yeah, I think we've, it's been an exciting year, with our new curricular endeavors that Director Strong was launched this year. It's been, I think, really eye-opening for a lot of us to be able to finally sit down and have a good reason to kind of dust off our lessons and really connect and look forward to the future, and how we can connect even further and align all of our objectives and all of that. So it's been being kind of our own solo department, because I come, Dana and Anna, they share space, but I found the restaurants are spread across town, so it's been really good to have that role as a reason to get together and connect. So, I think we're just looking forward to getting that more. So yeah, I know I'm honored to be a part of the group, and pleasantly amazed, especially at, I mean, I think at every level, there's really amazing things going on, so.
And it is nice, too, that, I mean, we do collaborate a lot with each other, even though we are across town. Like, we had a group with you last year, the Kinnerners, and Lou and Nick Potts at the time helped with the mural too last year, which was great.
Yep, and I, I've been in the last couple of years, very often, had clay, clay projects like that with the little ones, I'll say, Dana, you know that you sent these to the Albrook Center, and they just appeared, that's what it's all about.
And because of that collaboration across the grade levels, Dana, could you talk a little bit about where we are with the mural, and how the different parts of the mural have been kind of shared throughout the building and will eventually come back together?
Yeah, so we have, right now, there are eight four-by-four panels that we've worked on. Since there's not really a good home for them this year, we have them spread out in different people's classrooms, hoping that that kind of sparks conversation in different people's rooms about mental health and the art. And then next year, we're working with Dana to find a good spot, a good home, where they'll all, you know, come back together. So we've had the final, the reveal last May, and then they disperse, and then they'll come back together for this fall.
That's fantastic. That's fantastic.
That's a view of that high school?
Yeah.
Maybe another one in the future for the middle school?
Yes.
I see, that would be really cool.
Yeah, but we had an awesome experience working with Dana Arts, Mural Arts. They're just a fabulous organization, and there's a lot of education throughout the whole thing about mental health and about, you know, what does it take to make a giant art piece with, you know, hundreds of kids, so it was awesome.
And that really is just one example of the many things each of you do each and every day to help make art such an important part of kids' days. So thank you for what you do, and that's really the purpose of the resolution you have before you, board members, is to reflect upon the fact that art develops kids' creative problem-solving and critical thinking abilities, and teaches sensitivity and beauty and order, as well as expressive qualities, and that our leaders have acknowledged that there is absolutely a necessity to have art and experiences for our kids, and thank you, board members, for allowing the continued vital support for art to expand in our schools. It boosts academic outcomes. If you look at the kids who were part of the cross-country team, I bet many of these kids were in your classes along the way at some point, so that speaks volumes about who our kids are, and so very much a part of their lives. So I'd ask for your consideration, board members, of us being able to send this to, I think, a colleague that you folks are part of with the Wisconsin Art Society.
Yeah, for Youth Art Month, the big state capital show's coming up on April 10. We have six students that are in the show, and they always ask for leaders of the community to sign those forms and just show their support of the arts.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we have a rose.
All right, and I'll pass, we'll pass that around for people's signatures.
Do you have a ten-color preference?
Can you? Round of applause to our art teachers. Good luck to your little one, and hope he's feeling better.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you want to take a picture?
I took a picture already.
Okay.
We're standing, if that's okay.
No, that's perfect. All right. 6B, legislative engagement advocacy, mental health awareness presentation.
Can't, or, excuse me, Vice President, offer, you send it to me, and I will...
I did.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Dana, thanks. Now send this to the board.
Are we going to do it that way?
Would that be all right?
So, Dana, to imagine the animations? Which I guess is fine.
You said you did send that to me?
I did.
Do you mind?
Now, Diana's sending that. I'm so thankful that she took the time to put something together. You may remember the second meeting of this month, members of the community and legislative engagement team would like to kind of share important topics, not only with our board, but that of our community, through the newspaper, as well as through the videotapeing system, God bless you. And then I could pass along this presentation and our board recap. This one is one that Dana has great interest in, and volunteered to help present, develop a presentation, so we are very thankful for her taking the time to do that. And while we're doing that, would it be helpful, maybe, just to go to another report? Diana, might I have a quick one to catch your breath?
Sure, let's go down and see a report from the WDSB, Dave Bauer. Sailor in this house.
Go ahead.
Okay, Rod and I attended last week's basic capital. We took along with us Matt Fair, he's a medical school teacher here. He was a wonderful pick to come with, because he's also serving as a city council member in Madison, so particularly savvy about how this process works. The theme of the day, of course, was the governor's budget, which is every two years when we go through this process. Last week, he handed out some position papers for us to consider. They're highlighting key areas that we are already pretty well versed in, but we're supposed to be dabbling in for them. Those include, of course, a new model to promote renewable, sustainable funding, securing increases for special education for categorical A's, rehiring retired teachers without compromising the pensions, which we haven't talked about very much here at all, as well as property tax transparency for voucher schools, which I suspect that you'll be hearing more and all in the coming months, particularly through our community and legislative engagement committee. We also listened to a four-member legislative panel, which is what they have offered us at every day at the capital. This year it was Senator Luther Olson, Senator Chris Larson, Representative Robin Boss, and Representative Gordon Hints. They're familiar with those names, that is, two Democrats, two Republicans. I would like to tell you that their presentation is still confidence in me, and it will have a budget and know what we're doing by summer, but that would not be truthful of me. In fact, I was a little bit alarmed by the discord that I was seeing, and thought kind of maybe along the lines of a potential heat-up could be happening. Not that I want to jump to that, but just to warn you that if this budget is not in place by fall, what would happen then is that we would take the last two years, stadium levels, and just repeat them. Nobody wants that, right, Scott? We don't. But just, but just to prepare you that the summer is about to get heated. In the afternoon, we did have the opportunities to meet with Senators Irvin Bach and Representative Pope. You'll be pleased to know that there's still firm advocates in their corner, well versed in what's happening in Mount Porum. Some of the themes in the room from other school board members were interesting. They also like to share a desire to eliminate branch-based funding for mental health and safety initiatives. They also would like to provide more immediate support for schools in declining enrollments, which is affecting some of us in our rural areas right here in this county, as well as addressing teacher unemployment rates. So I thought it was a very productive day, and I'm so happy that we took Matt with us. I think that we should continue to take teachers with us. It's a very special thing that we do here in Mount Porum that other school districts don't, and they can offer that good classroom perspective. Mr. Heiss, what can you add to that?
I was struck by many of the same things that you were. I mean, I think it's going to be a, I think everyone expects it to be a long process that certainly won't end before the June 30th, end of the fiscal year. Oh, Senator Irvin Bach is on the finance committee, as you know. One of the interesting things that he said in our meeting with him is that finance, starting in April, will do four sort of hearings, listening sessions, and then after those sessions are over sometime late in April or May, finance begin their hearings on the budgets. You know, I think it'll be interesting to see, between now and when finance takes up the budget, if the Republicans take the stake acclaim to a strategy of some kind. Right now, they haven't. They've, they've taken, you know, a handful of specific positions against specific portions of the budgets, but their, but their position sort of generally hasn't been, hasn't been rolled out, and that's going to be, that's going to be sort of critical to our efforts in knowing where our lobbying efforts are going to be very, very important. So I think we're all on the lookout for more clarity on that front.
Any questions?
We remain hopeful that we can get some consensus, some one for purposes of our budget planning. And we know in the past what we've done, is we've created a budget based upon our best assumptions, and for this, we've seen one iteration of that, and once we get the information from the state, we can always adjust our budget accordingly, and so I'm appreciative of both Board Treasurer Sailor and Board Member Heiss, along with Matt Fair, who is a teacher that has preferred to join the team, and we can get the outcome on Wednesday. Sounds like a really good, good program.
Dana, are you ready? Should we go on to the next one? All right. Report of the joint meeting with the Village Chamber of Commerce, Economic Development Court, and School District. How do we think, what do we think?
I personally came out very excited.
Most good.
I thought it was great. I have high hopes for what we do next.
Can we highlight some of the joint decisions that we made, that we should work on, Steve, and I was catching some?
Yes. At the end of the evening, we asked people to kind of put their nickel down on a number of different ideas that were presented, and we stood out, and I'm going to pull up my press release that the team put together to make sure I'm accurately speaking to that. Thank you so much. Three rows to the top. The first had to do with affordable housing and senior housing as being important to our community, and we know that impacts the school district as well, as well as growing Mount Porum in a way that's responsible, and in a way that is representative of the needs of the community. And lastly, doing our best to continue with raising engagement of our community. Your participation in key decision-making stood out as also one of the top three goal-getters. And so, we plan on inviting back all of our respective board presidents, as well as the executive directors or superintendent in the organization, to talk about how best to move those three, those three ideas forward. So look for President Lipskell soon, very soon, on that front. I want to thank Mr. Heiss. You may remember that this was an idea born out of a comment that Rod made, oh, I want to say, three, four months ago. How about we get people together? You remember that, Rod? And those kinds of ideas are the kinds of ideas that helped us get to a better place as a team, so thank you to Board Member Heiss, and to President Lipskell, who's been instrumental in helping us message and develop the agenda. So, you might well have.
The food is really good, too. Did you have spaghetti for days, though, I think?
We all had spaghetti for days around here. Tomorrow's St. Joseph's Day. For you Italians, we were St. Patrick's Day yesterday. Tomorrow, rumors red, St. Joseph's Day. Cannolis.
Wait, you're making cannolis? I'll be in about eight.
Where's St. Joseph's?
Who doesn't tell you?
St. Joseph's, not by today, but your wife.
You weren't really wrong there. You're there early. You're there early. Sorry, I'm still thinking about cannolis. Okay.
Any other discussion about the meeting? All right, are you ready now?
I think so, and so what's the name of the item?
Legislative update.
Yep, Community Legislative Engagement Advocacy, topic of mental health awareness presentation. Full, whole thing.
It's going to be way less dramatic without a screen, just saying. Especially for those in the audience that can't see, we're looking at. Come sit behind me.
Come sit behind me.
There it is. About being sent to you, please hold it.
Are you going to dance the anime, whatever animation's gone? They're gonna dance.
Rod said he would, though, so there you go.
That's what I heard, too.
Thank you.
Hand my hand. It's got to go to space and back a couple times.
There you go. That was not part of the presentation under what I think. So today we're going to be talking about mental health and what's happening in the legislature, along with some very interesting statistics related to mental health that have no animation within our slideshow, but should be animated and nobody can see it on the screen. So I will read them, which is the last thing you should do when doing a PowerPoint presentation. This should be for your. So when you're discussing mental health nationwide, it's interesting to know that 20% of U.S. children have been diagnosed with a mental disorder. One in five children between age 13 and 18 have or will have a serious mental illness. 7.1% of U.S. children aged 13 to 17 have diagnosed anxiety. 3.2% of U.S. children aged 3 through 17 have diagnosed depression. The average delay between onset of symptoms of mental illness and intervention is eight to 10 years. 50% of all lifetime cases of mental illness begin by age 14. 15 to 25% of children receive specialty care out of those who are diagnosed receive specialty care for mental health. 70% of children in the juvenile justice system have a mental health condition. 37% of students with a mental health condition age 14 and older drop out of school. The American Academy of Child and Elderly and Psychiatry has identified 43 states with severe shortage of child psychiatrists and mental health professionals. Wisconsin is one of those. Currently in Wisconsin, actually in Dane County in specific, on date 15, we have more than 9.3 psychiatrists for 10,000 children. We have 48.7 licensed social workers for 10,000 children. We have 27.5 psychologists for 10,000 children. Iowa County, our close neighbor, has zero psychiatrists. 10.8 social workers and 1.5 psychologists. So you can imagine that the parental professionals in Dane County are also having to deal with that burden from the surrounding counties that don't have enough mental health professionals. They're coming into Dane County, they're coming into Madison in particular, that's where the highest concentration is in Dane County, to receive those services. So even though there are a large concentration of psychiatrists, social workers, and psychologists in Dane County, they're having to bear the burden for surrounding counties as well. So our current funding for mental health in schools, for specific mental health funding is grant-based. And this is what we're talking about, our collaboration with community agencies, much like we have done here and many surrounding districts have done with community agencies to bring in mental health professionals into schools to remove the transportation barrier that we're seeing. Organ mental health, I believe, last count, had seven school districts that they were providing services to, from what I remember, seven, seven to 10. I think that's growing every day because the need is growing. The problem with this collaboration, unlike our collaboration with Organ Mental Health, is that it is funded through grant dollars. So school districts have to apply for the grant, and if they apply and are told no, which we were, they have to go out and seek their own funding. So we provided our own funding to disadvantaged children through our Organ Mental Health collaboration. But that's not true for all districts. We also have through the DPI partial funding to districts for social workers' salaries in order to retain those professionals, to keep them on board, to provide their salary and to hire them. But this is only a 50% match, and those dollars have to be expended first before they're, before they are returned to the district. So that's current funding. Wisconsin ratios for school psychologist staffing is 979 students for one school psychologist. For social workers, that ratio is 1,561 students to one. Those aren't our numbers, but those are collectively throughout Wisconsin. That's how, that's how tight we are with school psychologists and social workers. So the Blue Ribbon Commission, as you know, we've all been told about that through Rod and Kimberly at a previous presentation. They recommend increasing the grant-based funding for community and school mental health collaboration grants from $3 million to $5 million. They recommend creating a new categorical aid for mental health services with payments calculated similarly to per pupil aid. This would be restricted to expenditures for mental health, and payments would be equal to $25 per pupil in the first year, which equates to $21 million, and $50 per pupil in the second year, the equivalent of $42 million. Now, we all know that Governor Evers has put together a budget, and he is very sensitive to the needs of school districts, and is also very sensitive to the mental health needs of the students. So in his budget, he's proposing $22 million each year to expand mental health categorically, to include reimbursement of expenditures for pupil services in schools, and to expand Tier 2 aid to all districts. $7 million each year to increase the number of grants provided for mental health collaboration, and about $2.5 million each year to expand training, which will personnel around the area of mental health. He's also proposing an additional FTE at the state level to facilitate the expanded programs, which is very exciting, because if you have an FTE facility in these programs, that person can provide additional data to the legislature to increase the need, so that they are understanding what the need is that the school districts are seeing. He is also proposing a VADU care expansion, which will allow more people to access services who don't have coverage for mental health services right now. So the comparison between the Blue Ribbon Commission and Governor Evers' budget, obviously Governor Evers is proposing a lot more funding for mental illness in schools. He is going above and beyond what the Blue Ribbon Commission has proposed. So at this point, with the Blue Ribbon Commission and Governor Evers' budget, what can we do to help? Could we write a resolution? We sent the resolution out to WSB and to our legislature in order to, so that they are aware that we are very supportive of mental health funding in schools. Our board partnerships with community leaders will be helpful. We have the Mental Health Coalition here, and I would point out that we aren't the only ones who can write letters and provide resolutions to the legislature. That can come from our village, that can come from the chamber, that can come from anybody. Anybody can write a letter to the legislature in support of mental health funding for the We also need to continue to contract our legislatures, including those on the Senate Committee on Education and the Assembly Committee on Education. All of those are listed. I have a link here in case you would like to use the link in order to find out who all of those people are. Send them emails, write them letters, let them know that this is important. We know our story here in Montclair. We know that we have had some struggles around this issue. It's very important that we retain funding for our students, and not just through the good work of Organ Mental Health Coalition or the cooperation that we have with them, but also through hiring additional social workers, psychologists, additional staff that can provide some of those services in-house. That's the only way we're going to really make a dent in this issue, is in order to have enough staff providing those services that are hired by the district. That's truly how I feel about it. I hope that, I hope we can get towards that. And I would put out to everybody, every board member here and people in the audience, what else can we do, other ideas on how we can impact the legislature to provide additional funding? Oh, look, we have more people.
I have an idea.
Okay.
It'd be great if Mountmore Mail wrote an article about this.
No pressure.
No pressure. But since you're there.
So I think we should add testifying at one of the roadshow hearings and testifying at JFC when it's at the Capitol, when they take up residence for the Capitol to consider the budget as well. I think that's going to require some preparation. I think we all need to be on the same page in terms of what and how we're testifying about. But I think particularly, testifying at a roadshow hearing is, can be, can be very meaningful, because you have to take time and, and, and travel, and so I think it's, I think that could be, I think that could be meaningful.
Good dates and times for lectures, yeah.
Yeah, we can, we can, I can ask John's office, but I don't think so yet.
And John Urban Bach, Senator Urban Bach will be at our next Community and Legislative Engagement Committee meeting. I'm inviting him to come out, I think, April 22nd. We have testified in the past, it is a great suggestion, and we've done that down in Platteville. And so would welcome anybody to join me in that testifying. And then, of course, once it gets to JFC's final visits, we certainly don't mind organizing a group. We have the makings of an outstanding message through your, through your resolution that the board committed through your last meeting, so.
We also need to, we have to tell our story, Montclair's story, and I think that's going to be important moving forward, and especially as we apply for our grant, for additional funding. We need to tell our story, and we need to be, we need to be very convincing. We have the need, we know we have the need, we just need to tell a story.
So I have, I have a question. So there's clearly like a severe, severe shortage of mental health professionals. Is there, do you know, is there anything being done at the state level to encourage people into that profession? You know, forgiving student homes and things like that, if they stay and serve in the same region where they're educated and things like that?
I am not for anything to that effect. I do know that the medical college, it has a partnership, that they're trying to encourage additional people to take on the role of psychiatry. In addition, there's also talk about having pediatricians have some sort of certification or additional training in psychiatry. A lot of times, the pediatricians will, will have that burden, because there's just not enough professionals to deal with all of the medications. I see pediatrician, orthopedic. So that is something that's being talked about, because it's easier to find pediatricians than it is to find psychiatrists. So if we can train our pediatricians to act in that way, then that at least helps.
The federal government has a loan forgiveness program for school psychologists and social workers who serve in Title I school districts, and you have to have worked in those buildings for five years. Title I are those buildings that have a poverty rate of about 40, 45% above. And so we don't qualify for Title I. Moreover, the issue is the number of colleges that offer programs for school psychology is few, and the number of students admitted is even fewer. So while there are many state schools across Madison, they all offer school psychologist programs, they typically only turn about 10 to 13 students annually out of their programs. So the competition for those services is at an all-time high.
Well, and then when you bring in those 13, how many are like retiring?
Right.
You know, I don't think we're growing. It's probably just thanks to us.
We're going to have to get creative, I think, in the next few years, or we're going to have to start thinking about ways that we can address this issue. Not just us, but it's all over the place.
Nationally.
Nationally. Forty-three states, probably fifty, have a severe shortage. The other ones, they don't have it all either, it's just that their need is not severe.
Well, this was wonderful, putting it all in perspective for us. Thank you so much, and I, with your permission, I'd love to be able to share this out with the board recap, so that others can hear the news, and certainly, to the extent to which I can be of service in either putting something together for the newspaper or working in partnership with you and putting something, because I'd love to, I think it's a message that's important to get out, to tell our story and to explain the burden we need.
I'd recommend, I think it can be most impactful if we, and I'm happy to work on, if, if, if we put together something that all of us could sign, so that everyone sees that we're, I mean, this is, this is something that...
And issue with the resolution, what would that look like?
Well, I think for, for purposes of submission to the newspaper, it could be a guest editorial or a guest editorial or a letter to the editor.
We can tie suicide prevention in there, too, I think.
Do you and I want to work on it together, maybe? And we could run out the Platteville with the board, and then it could be something the entire board sends out to the, to the newspaper.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next time, I think it'll work, right? Give them like five minutes. Just to make sure. All right. Moving on to 6E, reorganization meeting. So this is on here because Diane's going to be, so normally our meeting would be first one in May, which would be the sixth, but Diane's going to be gone.
So in order to prevent any sort of unbreakable tie.
Yeah. So do you guys mind, we can have it on the 20th, right? That's still in the timeframe.
Still in the timeframe.
So instead of having it on the 6th, we can move it to the 20th. I think we normally do it at like 6-ish. We ran over.
We went over.
Last year, yeah. Last year, we allowed, I think, 45 minutes and ran over.
We went over like 15.
Yeah. So we definitely need an hour. Yeah. So start at 6 or even 5:45. Does that work for everyone? I know there's probably a committee meeting.
What's the night?
The 20th, right before our board meeting.
So that would be a Safety and Wellness Committee night, but perhaps maybe, as I look to my calendar, would it be helpful to do something, we do like a 4:30 Safety and Wellness, excuse me, 5:00 PM Safety Wellness, 6:00 Committee meeting, reorganization meeting and 7:00 Board meeting?
I do do that, huh?
Could that, could that work?
All right. So then, a reorg meeting will be Monday, May 20th at 6:00. Thank you. All right. Then, 6F, commencement.
Because commencement is so much earlier this year, May 19th, we have to begin thinking about who's going to participate. The state is going to be a little bit smaller this year, and for purposes of just flow, we've elected to, as an administrative team, to have Colleen, maybe you know this already. Colleen's been behanding portfolios over to Rick and/or myself, and then we'll be handshaking with students. And then to keep a procession line, so that it doesn't hold up names being read, we'd like to maybe... allow for an opportunity for staff who are present who want to take a picture with the students. We were going to try to do that at the, at the, on the floor. So the kids would come off the stage and then go right into a photo session. And then any staff member or board member who would like to be a part of those pictures, they're welcome to do that. So as you begin to think about your participation, we need to know about caps and gowns, making certain that we have a cap and gown for you. And then for your alma mater, we want to make certain we have the proper hood for you as well if you don't have that. So today is the eighteenth of March. If you could maybe let me know by the end of the month if you have your interest to participate and then we'll find a way to plug you into the, the program in a very special, special way. So then we can also, for that matter, if you don't have a hood, let me know too and then let me know your alma mater and we'll be sure to get you a hood.
I know I will not be there because I'll be traveling that day.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know. It's basic. So I'll, I'll have twenty-five hundred kids to track, so I, I don't know.
I'll be there if I could be.
Love it.
I'll be there. I'll send you an email.
Thank you.
I'm glad to be there as well.
Thank you. So we would love to have you help us with the procession in, procession out, and then also with the pictures with the students, if that would be okay with you. Rod Heiss, I don't think you've been in the one where we've gotten you a-
No.
So if you'd let me know your university's colors, we'll, we'll get your color.
I do.
Who've got you?
I don't have mine. I just brought them from high school.
Okay. Why don't you send me that information and get, we can get it organized then. Jeff?
I don't know yet.
Okay. I will not be there. Thank you so much for letting us talk about that.
All right. Moving on to seven B, consider approval of supplemental left round work for owner savings.
Wonderful. Well, thank you, board members, for allowing us some additional time to regroup after some of the thoughts that were shared about our project and the front facade. The goal, as you probably saw in the document that I have attached to the board agenda, hopefully gets at what we're trying to achieve by being as cost neutral as possible, but also taking care of some of the needs. Maybe a good place for me to start is just to, just provide an overview as to that document as soon as I can pull up. As you may remember, the original intent was to have a metal facade that would be attached to the brick. The issue for us is the brick and mortar. It's just seen better days since its installation in nineteen sixty-four, sixty-five or thereabouts. I think it is original to the school. And we thought maybe there was some question about not only the cost of the metal, but then also the durability of the metal. And so another solution has been to remove the front facing of that brick. And I can send you a picture of what parts of that front brick would be removed. It literally is every piece that faces towards South Gate Street on the entry portion of, of the building, including its brick. And that would account for about twenty-two thousand dollars, that's less than the twenty-eight thousand dollars that would be used for the metal. So the thought that it was going to be more expensive is indeed not the case. It's actually a little bit cheaper to do, to do the brick. Now, one of the things I worry about is either you get it right or you miss by a mile when it comes to the brick. But since we're already doing the four pillars that are there with the new brick, I think the mile missing might be a little less pronounced and it will actually look, look very, very nice. And so we're proposing that we move forward with the tear out and the rebuilding of that new front facing for about twenty-two thousand dollars. And then we really do believe that lighting is important to those classrooms and also not just for the aesthetics, but also for those rooms that would be impacted. It would be the large group instruction room that does not have windows at this point. Transom windows, those are those little kind of rectangular windows that sit atop of, of a, of a building structure. And it would match, I think, very nicely with the, with the facility area where your business is. Yeah, fitness center. Thank you. All total, that's about forty-four thousand dollars, a little more than that. How do we get to a better spot in terms of finance, the financial side, so that we're not spending much more on this? You may remember there was some seating that was to extend out past the covered portico for students waiting in the bus loop area. And by omitting that, north, going north of that portico, we can save us about twelve thousand five hundred dollars. We, we don't know, there'll be plenty of seating there, but we just didn't know that was necessary. If we wanted it, it would be nice to have, but it's not a must-have.
Can I just interrupt just a few? So just so that I understand, the seating proceeds north to the end of the canopy. So there is seating underneath the canopy?
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
That's exactly right, yes. So this would have been in addition to what was in the canopy. Thank you. Is that right, Jeff? You have a question?
No, I just thought that.
Very good, very good. So there are two types of seating areas that we're introducing now to this area. One that would have a wood finish and one that would have a concrete cap finish. You might remember there was some seating and I'd love to be able to show it to you on the overhead. I'm sorry, I can't do that. But I'll send it to you, the email tonight. In short, there's some seating that was already scheduled around the, around the flag pole. We're proposing that we leave that seating unchanged. That would still have a nice wood top to it, would have a nice look to it, but that the seating that was scheduled around the perimeter of the south and then the east side of that plaza would have the same concrete cap that you'd see underneath the, underneath the portico. And that would save approximately fifty-seven hundred dollars. There's some to do that. So we'd have two different kinds of seating. I think most of the kids, quite frankly, are going to be wanting to sit around the flag pole and they would around the perimeter of the, of the, of the plaza area there. But if they wanted to, they certainly could. There'd be enough seating for up to seventy individuals in space. So plenty of opportunity for families, visitors, others coming to, to, to enjoy the school. We believe we can leverage some site grading costs, about fifty-four hundred dollars a credit there. And then a really unique idea, and since confirmed here this afternoon, I understand Soil Testing Agency would agree that it could be suitable, is to grind up the parking lot, the gravel for the new lot. Instead of having to ship that out elsewhere, we would use that as part of the base. And we think, assuming that that meets with the Soil Testing Agency, that can net us anywhere between sixty-seven hundred and seventy-three hundred dollars. So I put down seven thousand dollars. So as you see in that little letter I drafted for your consideration, that leaves us with trying to find another almost fourteen thousand dollars to, to help make this cost neutral. We've talked a lot about there being owner savings on this project. And there's lots of pockets at which owner savings comes from. It's not just out of some creative solutions to design that we've had or favorable labor expenditures, but one of those happens to be the interest that we're earning on our certificate of deposits that we're receiving. And so I'm proposing that we use a small portion of the interest earned thus far on the certificate of deposits to offset that cost. This is interest, somewhere in the neighborhood, I guess even more north of two-hundred fifty thousand dollars has been earned on those CDs that we, at some point, will need to consider how we'll utilize those dollars. But the additional thirteen, fourteen thousand dollars I'm proposing being paid for out of those, those CD interest earnings. Bringing the, bringing the, the solution to cost neutral, as was, was proposed, addresses the needs of the, of the brick and then also takes away the metal issue which was concerned for durability. So that's the best thinking from our team. I don't know if there's anything else you wanted to share that maybe I missed. Well done, team. And so we're happy to answer any questions you may have of us.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Danny, seconded by Damon. Any discussion?
The restroom room, the two windows proposed for that area, are they going to be in line with, all the way across with what we have for the weight room area?
That's exactly right. So when you look at the street, you'll see all of them in a-
They'll be in a room. Excellent. Kids get thrown around in there, so many types that I don't know about putting them in there.
They're up high or-
Yeah, they're six feet, they're six feet off the floor.
Six feet off the floor?
If the paddy stops at four feet off the floor, so I don't think, I don't think we throw any kids higher than the paddy.
I'd seem to go higher than that.
Some strong kids, hopefully not that strong.
Maybe you could stage on that here.
Give a target, maybe.
They're trembling.
So hard time. Way back when I first got on the board.
Well, I just want to thank you, Dr. Slano, and thank your team for being responsive to the concerns that were expressed at the last meeting. I think this is very thoughtful and very well done. Thank you.
Thank you for expressing the concern, board members. Thanks.
All right. We have a motion by Danny, seconded by Damon. Any other discussion? All of the favor say aye? Outposed? All right.
Give a special note of thanks to Kevin Maguire, who's in the audience this evening. I want to also thank Dave Reed. Dave, can you talk just for a moment a little bit about some of the asbestos abatement work we're considering this summer in the two-hundred through two-oh-five area, please?
Yes. It was brought to, brought to our attention that, you know, we're, we're doing a lot of asbestos abatement down in two-hundred wing and rooms are being reconfigured and hallways that are being cut in. And it was, and it was brought up, like, why don't you do all the rest? Why don't you do the other six rooms? Then we would have all the asbestos in the two-hundred wing abated. We are looking at what that's going to cost. Of course, that means new flooring in that room as well. So the first, the first six rooms going south in the two-hundred wing really are not getting touched other than paint and stuff, so it makes perfect sense if we've got, if we're there. Asbestos abatement team is, is going to be on site. It probably needs another two days of work for them. So we are, we are getting pricing on what that impact is. That would leave us with asbestos in the whole entire high school just remaining underneath the restroom room. That would be, I guess, basically, that would be basically all. We're doing the little theater, we're doing the, the rest of the rooms down the three-hundred wing, we're doing the, there's the commons. That would be it.
And I hear the little theater is going to be done over spring break.
Yes, exactly. The, the commons, the little theater, a couple of, we're, we're just trying to help Carrimer get a jump on the summer work. Get some of that abatement done now so that they can jump right in there and not wait for the abatement team to get their work done so they can start their work. So that will happen over spring break, yes.
We are looking forward to sharing with Buildings and Grounds Committee a number of additional projects that are time-sensitive, that are already budgeted for. That'll happen on the twenty-fifth of March, one week from tonight, and then hopefully gain approval before the whole board on April first, that's at the next board meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Seven C policy, first reading, use of audio and visual media policy, three six one point one.
Board members, this comes from, from our education committee. They reviewed it a number of times. Born into this, baked into this, I should say, is the feedback of all staff at all levels, as well as reaching out to specific family members who've expressed interest in this in the past, and we're bringing it for your consideration this evening, please.
I have a question.
Please.
All right. In the little ratings chart for R-rated movies, it says may not be shown in grades nine to ten.
There is a little asterisk, not asterisk, put it in. In addition to that, in the paragraph right below that, the last sentence in the paragraph below that?
Okay. That, I missed that. So I was like, what if that, my first thought was Schindler's List, and what if they're showing it in a room and what if it's got like, I'm fixed class, but I missed that sentence. Thank you.
Yeah, that was an important part of the meeting, too. I like that idea of putting an asterisk next to that and then maybe putting an asterisk down to the section there so that it's not easily messed up. By the way, I should have mentioned it. This is Sarah Straka's outstanding work on this. And so Sarah, thank you for your leadership here.
I'll put the asterisk back in. I could go. I'll put it back in.
Thank you.
Because I, I read it and I, I just, I didn't even-
Doesn't cost anything.
No.
No, I, I also want to point out, Sarah's going to work with this. This doesn't distract her since, like, I'll commit her, she worked with teachers at Albright Schools extensively back and forth during this time.
It looks like a lot of thought went into it. Motion to approve with the asterisks.
Danny, seconded by Jeff. Any more discussion? All right. All of the favor say aye? Roll call. Oh, roll call, you're right. It's first reading. All right. Whew, keeping me on each other. All right. Danny?
Yes.
Damon?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Rod?
Yes.
And I'm also, yes. Okay, my name's over there. I'll send it to the lead. Sorry. All right. All right. So policy passes. All right. So we have to de consideration of budget purchases for interactive displays.
Board members, this is part of the mom of money you've already set aside for the purchases of interactive displays. I'm pleased to tell you that the cost for these items are the same for the sixty-five inches they were last year at this time. And you'll see these are coming from two pots of dollars. One is from our, and then the other would be for our finishing out our fourth grade, our intermediate sector.
Motion. Second.
Motion by Jeff, seconded by Rod. Any discussion? All of the favor say aye? Outposed? All right. We will get interactive displays. Moving on to E, consideration of twenty eighteen nineteen bid budget provision.
As you're in just buying, this is coming out of the Finance Committee's work, as you know, a couple of times each year, as we gather additional information on where we're at in terms of revenue and expenditures, we have to adjust our budget accordingly. And the process by which it's done is, the format by which it's done, I should say, is identified by the state and that's what you have before you this evening. We'd be happy to talk through any of those line methods that you may need, otherwise we consider to be pretty problematic.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Rod, seconded by Jeff. Any discussion? All of the favor say aye? Outposed? All right.
Good job as always, Scott. Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right. Eight A, citizens comments. Same. Nine is, of course, our list of future agenda items. Ten would be our schedule of next meetings.
And we are meeting April first?
Yes.
We have four.
Motion with Jeremy.
Motion by Rod, seconded by Jeff. All of the favor say aye? Outposed?
Could I borrow Rod Heiss, Diane Rothmer and Danny Michael to talk about candidacy?
I just want to get your-
Yeah.
So I was, I had a new product.